Welcome to our 1 o'clock Monday, January 23rd Board Meeting of the Deschutes County Commissioners. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as you can see, our setting's a little different. The concept is Monday afternoon work sessions with staff, kind of roundtable instead of the dais. We were going to do it upstairs at some point, and we're just waiting for the technology to catch up to us. It works, but then it just drops out once in a while, so the next generation of the technology's on its way. So at this time, is there citizen input on any items that are not on the agenda? And yeah, maybe we'll just do that on Wednesdays, or I don't know if that sounds right to the board, you know, just kind of opening up Wednesday mornings every time for citizen input and not at the work sessions. But we'll see. I mean, if it's the right thing to do or not. Any thoughts?
I think citizen, I think we should welcome citizen input and.
I mean, just kind of real-time agenda management.
You know, it's so good that we are transparent and we have our, so yeah, both meetings.
That's fine. Yeah, so as I say, in the future, we'll be upstairs and we'll, the will of the board is to keep citizen input right at the top of the agenda even during a work session item.
I guess the other thing I would say is I still don't really understand why we do not allow citizen input on items that are on our agenda for a given day. You know, I can imagine there's, you know, time efficiency concerns included in that, but to me, allowing people to talk about the item that is going to be on the agenda that day is, would make a lot of sense.
So from my experience, we prepare for a board meeting. If somebody has input on the topic, I'm available, phone call, email. If they want to talk, come into the office in person, not a problem. We, everything's not a public hearing on a matter. So if we did that, it would just open everything up to a public hearing, which is fine. I like to hear from people. But, you know, then we're in a situation where it's okay, do we give people two minutes or three minutes? You know, if there's 100 people that come in and say, yo, I really, really want you to do this, does that weigh the decision because of the passion in the room at that moment? Is that the big picture for the 200,000 citizens or not? So I'm just thinking, there's different ways we can look at it, too.
I just, I just think that there's a lot of people who don't, don't focus on something till they see it on the agenda, or they hear about it being on the agenda, and letting them come in and say their piece and share their goals and priorities with us when they're inspired is a good thing.
Great. Item number one, ARPA Grant Status Update: Neighbor Impact Childcare Expansion Program. Laura, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Laura Skundrick, Management Analyst. So as you know, in fiscal year 2021, Deschutes County was awarded about $38.4 million in American Rescue Plan Act Fund through the federal government. And in October of 2021, you approved several, several ARPA grants to Neighbor Impact for the purpose of expanding childcare programs in Deschutes County. Since then, you have requested updates on the childcare projects that have been funded with ARPA dollars. And today is the fourth in that series of updates. So with us, I believe on Zoom, is Karen Prowe, the Childcare Resources Director with Neighbor Impact, to provide us with those updates.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
So I see you provided this memo with some of the candidates in the positions, so that's pretty exciting right now. If you wanted, yeah, just proceed with what the big picture is right now.
Sure. So we rolled out our Fast Track work in Deschutes County, and we are right now in our second cohort for Fast Track. And what Fast Track is, is a program that brings people in who are interested in becoming teachers in a classroom and takes them through several months of intensive training and coaching in the classroom to really skill them up to be able to take over as a lead teacher in a classroom. And so right now, we have about 16, 17 people who are in our current cohort. A couple of the things that we've done a bit different since we rolled this out is we've changed into having two cohorts a year instead of one cohort a year because of the intense need for teachers. And then also, we have split our cohort into infant toddler track and a preschool track because that was the way we could do it to have the best outcomes for the teachers who are being trained. And so to really work with licensing closely to ensure that these people are ready to go as classroom teachers. We have a group of childcare centers right now who, some are the same from last time around, some are new to this project, and standing up new teachers and making it so that classrooms are opening and serving additional children. So that project is moving along and has been very successful.
Can you tell me what is, question, what is the, what is the, is this classroom work for adults, or is it in-room training, or what, yeah, what's the, what is it?
So we do, we do a combination. So each of our Fast Track teacher candidates is working full-time in a program. And so they're getting real-life experience during the week. They are also attending evening and sometimes a Saturday class to add up to 60 hours of hand-chosen training to make sure that they are well-versed in understanding and guiding behavior, human growth and development, trauma-informed care. So those 60 hours are teacher training that they attend. And then we also have coaches who are going to the training with the participants and then going into the classroom and coaching them to really put into practice what they're learning in that training. It's just a far more effective model than sending someone to a training and then hoping that they're able to find how to implement that in their own way in their classroom.
Great, thank you.
Another thing that we added this time around is mental health consultation for our teachers, the teacher candidates, and really to be there as consultation for them as new teachers, but also if they're experiencing a behavior in a classroom and they really need help on understanding that and finding the best way to meet that child's needs, they have someone to reach out to. All right, and then looking down our, our list of projects, the next one in the memo sent out is regarding the small-capacity grants. And we received 35 applications for that, that money. And what we're doing right now is going through and making phone calls and sending emails to the applicants to ensure that they are still on track to do the project that they had set out to do. We have applications from Sisters Bend, Redmond, and out of those applications, we have a mix of childcare centers and people who are right now registered family, so they're allowed to serve 10 children wanting to move up to certified family to serve 16. We have some who are exempt providers right now, so they legally don't have to be licensed, but they can only serve three children, and they're interested in becoming registered family. So moving up to that category of serving 10. Some of our centers applying are looking to add one or two infant rooms. Some are looking to add infants and preschool. So really, we're just looking at what is the best outcome that we can have with these dollars? And how do we see the most efficient use of those dollars? Who are the people who are applying for these dollars, who are not applying for other dollars that are available? So making sure that we're being really intentional about those grants. So we hope to have that piece of it figured out by the end of this week and then do a final application review with those who have applied.
So Karen, when are you going to have that?
We hope to have that wrapped up and start getting into contracts with people at the beginning of February. So hoping to roll that out quickly. There's a lot that comes in an application that just begs more curiosity and more questions, making sure that the place that a program wants to move into can actually be licensed, making sure that someone who's registered family can actually get licensing approval to go up to certified family. So that's where we're at right now.
And you didn't include Lapine, no one applied from Lapine?
We don't have any applicants from Lapine. We do have applicants from Lapine for the project that we're doing with the Small Business Development Center for people wanting to stand up new childcare. So there's some action happening in Lapine, but not through this grant.
Karen, can you remind us, or remind me, that what the maximum size for one of these small grants is? And do you, given the applications that you have, you know, how far do you think the 500K is going to get you?
So in our original request for information, we had put out $5,000 and we had said approximately, because we really want to see what the need is from people, but approximately $5,000 to move from exempt to registered family. So from three, moving from caring for three to 10. And then $10,000 to move from RF to CF, so to move from serving 10 to 16. And then $15,000 for a brand-new certified family program to come in. And then between $40,000 to $45,000 for standing up a new classroom in a childcare center. So one of the things that we are asking for with the applications that we will do as follow-up with these programs is to ask what their actual need is financially, so that we can, again, see how far we can spread these dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, and then our, the last project on our list, the Pathways Project with our Pathways Navigator, one of the ways that we've gotten new teachers into our programs is by going out and being present at community events, giving out information on the profession of childcare and what it's like to be a teacher in a classroom, and really encouraging people into this profession. Doing just a lot of, lot of outreach, recruiting, advertising, Facebook marketing, working with partners, with high schools, with the colleges. And we've been able to get in new teachers through this project. And our Pathways Navigator is standing up some, like, ongoing meetups with our partners like Latino Association and, you know, the different chamber events, the coffee clatters, things like that. And then also hitting up all sorts of events. And then with our Pathways Navigator, also, we have, we've worked with a marketing firm, and we're going to be having a marketing campaign that's going to be coming out soon because we've had so much interest in this.
Well, it sounds like, yeah, you're kind of building the base for a huge future success possibly. I mean, if there's like a getting over the hump, and all of a sudden it's hip and cool to do this, we will be ready.
Exactly. That's our hope, is really to have people educated and skilled up in the field so that as things change, we're able to serve our community well.
So Karen, the additional $8.2 million that the governor gave, is that going to be available for your program, then?
So the $8.2 million is coming in through Neighbor Impact Childcare Resources, and those dollars are a combination of things. So we have three different opportunities that are out for prospective providers right now. We have what we're calling Opportunity A. I know it's a really snazzy name. And with that one, anybody who is opening up a childcare facility around any area in Central Oregon, and they really know what they're doing already, they already have the business savvy, they've done this before, you know, we're able to give them a very large grant, so up to a little bit over $500,000 to expand their capacity. It comes out to about $10,000 per child. And then we have another one called Opportunity B. And with that opportunity, a program that's wanting to stand up something new, maybe they don't have as much business savvy, we're working with the Small Business Development Center to develop a curriculum where we can bring them in through that, that business class, kind of like what we're doing with the Family Childcare, but a little bit more intense. And then really do that one-on-one coaching with them to come up with that business model. And then there's an up to $300,000 grant at the end of that. So really targeting those large centers. We also, with that bucket of money, asked for money to keep that Small Business Development Center Neighbor Impact project going. And so we passed through some dollars to SBDC to keep that project going to be able to also roll that out across the state. So we, Ken and I were getting so many requests for, you know, how did you do that? What does that look like? So we are working with partners around the state to be able to replicate that model. We also asked for enough money to put 60 additional early educators through that program to open up family childcare with a $5,000 grant at the end. So the, most of those dollars are rolling out into our community. We did hire a couple of staff people here to be able to oversee that work. And we're seeing a huge response from the community for those projects as well.
Thanks for running through what you're doing with those $8.2 million from the state, Karen. We've had some questions about kind of overlap or complementarity with the ARPA investments that, that we made. And so you've, you've just taken us through the, the programs that we've helped to fund with ARPA dollars, and you've described what this, what the state is supporting Neighbor Impact to do. But I wouldn't be able to tell someone else, this is the way that these, these activities are complementary or like how they synergize with each other. I mean, could you, could you walk us through that? Like, how, how do these, all of these pieces build on each other or prevent overlap or seek overlap, you know, because, or seek continuity and things like that? And to add up to a whole kind of package of, of strategies?
Yeah, we're, we're definitely looking at a holistic approach. I think there are many right ways to solve the childcare crisis, and we're not going to do it by focusing on any one thing. We can't just have a lot of childcare centers, and we can't have everything in one regional area. So we have to have different types of care. We have to have things like the Fast Track project to be able to stand up new teachers. I would say that one really important piece is that I think the state of Oregon acknowledged that Central Oregon was ready to receive these dollars because we were already working with ARPA money. We were already working to roll out other projects. So we showed a level of readiness that potentially other regions were not able to show. So I think that one of the reasons that we were able to receive the dollars is because we already had that connection with other money to roll out unique projects. So I think we, we attracted the money by using the money that was given to our program by the Deschutes County Commissioners. I think that the, with overlap, I think what we have is we're standing up new programs with this $8.2 million that comes from the state. One of the reasons that we're able to do that is we can also look at these potential program owners and say workforce is such a barrier right now, but we have this great Fast Track project that we're doing. And so you're going to need five teachers. How can we work together with this to help you bring in new teachers into your program to really be ready to go? And we're starting to see, you know, in areas outside of Deschutes. When we look at Jefferson and Crook, we're also putting some of the money from the $8.2 million there, but we don't have the Fast Track project there. So we're starting to see that gap. So we're seeing where it looks good and it's successful, and we're able to extend that offer to new programs. And we're also seeing where they don't currently have that service. And it's a different conversation about what success is going to look like for those programs. I think that, that the other piece that's really complementary is just being able to build out the family cohort that we did with SBDC. It really paved the way to be able to say, this is working. We've done this for a while. We know it works. We can model this for centers now and be able to say that we're going to stand up new programs. So it's not, not the same thing, but it's definitely paved the way for it.
Right, right. And, and it was especially useful to kind of understand how all of that workforce pipeline work that was done earlier makes this now a ripe place to expand the brick-and-mortar, you know, childcare facilities because, you know, we've, we've done a lot of work to ensure that there's going to be people to staff those childcare centers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the update. It's pretty exciting seeing this, as I say, it sounds like real good foundational and broad expansion of programs and capacity for Central Oregon. I'm glad the ARPA dollars are going farther now, too.
Yep. We sure appreciate the opportunity to make it happen.
Have a great day.
You too. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Item number two, Economic Development Loan for Tiny Watt Solar. So yeah, sorry, not quite set up at the table in front of us for three right now, but we'll.
Good morning, Commissioners, or good afternoon, I guess it is. For the record, Jen Patterson, Strategic Initiatives Manager for the county. This afternoon, we have Steve Curley, Director of Redmond Economic Development Incorporated, as well as Bruce Barrett from the ECO Due Diligence Committee. The motion before you today is to approve a request for an Economic Development Forgivable Loan in the amount of $10,000 for Tiny Watt Solar. The loan would be made from the Edco Development Loan Fund, which currently has a balance of $282,600. Tiny Watt Solar is requesting the loan in order to add five new positions to their company. The current staff report, I think that was printed in front of you, had it listed as Tiny Watt Solar having four employees. I have an update to that number. They currently have six employees, and they're looking to add five more. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve and to Bruce.
Good afternoon.
Thank you very much for joining us. Good to see you.
Good to see you. And just for the record, Steve Curley, Director of Redmond Economic Development.
And I'm Bruce Barrett with the Review Committee.
There we go. So we're going to tag-team this a little bit. It's the first opportunity I've had in my role to bring one of these forward. And I think it's the first time in a little while we've been able to bring one forward.
So you refer to Redmond Economic Development Committee, kind of in partnership with Edco?
Yeah. We, I mean, we're Edco, or I'm Edco, but Redmond likes to.
Yep.
Redmond Economic Development, so.
Got the Redmond flag today.
That's right. We have to be a little different than Ben, so we roll with that. But yeah, you know it. So just, I'll give a little briefing on the company. So they, they came to the area last spring. They were operating, well, what they do is they create solar panel kits for vans. So they do these van conversions, so that they're like on the top of the van, is what they do. And they were, interestingly, before they came and decided to kind of put their roots down in Redmond, they were on a boat in the Caribbean, I believe, somewhere. And that is actually how they perfected their product, because they're out on the ocean and they need power. And so that's how they kind of developed and perfected. After doing that for a while, they decided the, you know, the business was viable. They wanted to put roots down. They had connections in Portland where a lot of the work was being done by third parties. And so they decided when they were going to put roots down that they wanted to land in Redmond. And part of that is the Central Oregon community has a, a number of these conversion vans, these kind of off-road where folks want to go out and be off the grid. And so they have a great base of customers here, but they also sell 90% of their products outside the area. So it's truly, you know, more of a national business, but they felt like this would be a good place to, to put roots down. And so we met with them back in July, or excuse me, April. And, and at the time, decided that they weren't quite ready for the funds yet, and we needed them to do a little bit more work. And so really, that's when the work started. We met again in November, felt like they were at that point. And maybe I can let Bruce then talk a little bit about the business case and what we were looking for and where they got to.
So our initial meeting with Tiny Watts, the owner is, is a sole owner, but he, his wife is involved and some other family members. So he is a graduate engineer from OIT, so he's an Oregon guy. He had initially requested, if I remember right, they wanted to expand their product line. And there were some solar components that they wanted to add to a unit that already existed. And that was an installation that was the power component that went in these vans, and it could be powered through solar. So that was the magic sauce. But he wanted to expand the product line with some other solar additional units, the collectors. And so our initial meeting, we felt like expanding the line at this early stage was a mistake, that he should get deeper into the single product line and see if he can get some market penetration. So that was our first recommendation. Our second was to flesh out his employee staffing, because he had the projection, and this is what we obviously were going to fund with these, these monies. But he didn't have those people or had not made commitment. And so we said, let's get that, those people in place, make sure your efficiencies are starting to show up. Because right at the moment, he was just doing some special projects, and it was kind of a custom shop. So we asked him to expand into more of a, an install and product development type of an approach with his, with his business model. So when we met the next time, actually, all of that had been accomplished. Not to the extent, you know, because of the timeframe, but he had put all of those measures in place. And so we actually did start to see some efficiencies in his profit and loss statement. He had the people in place that could do the work and were actually performing those tasks. And he had actually engaged with some marketing, outside marketing that was going to promote this kind of a sole product line that he had. And he had seen some recognition in the marketplace for this product line as being unique in, in the, in the market opportunity. So all of those things made us feel like he was on track. We could see the future. We did look at projections, which were extensive and complete, a composite approach to his strategy for, for business development and for product development. So all of that is in place. We felt confident about the measures that he had achieved in his sales and the projections, which were reasonable. So we felt like now's the time, he could really use this funding to put him where he needs to be, get those people in place, get the efficiencies in place, and start his marketing plan.
And just, and just a correction, he, six employees is, is what the total, so actually 12,000 was the increase from, I think Jen had mentioned, so six was the number of employees.
So they're asking for 12 today?
Correct.
Ready to commit to those six new positions?
Yep.
So I got to see these guys last fall at the Pub Talk, and I remember the excitement in the rooms, like, wow, this is interesting. And it is. It's the next level of solar, capturing energy, battery storage, and the lithium batteries. And then, you know, getting the, the inverters, so you can really do some, you know, microwaves or boil water or whatever. It's kind of the next level of really being able to use that stored energy also.
One of the things that makes them unique is that they have a higher quality and they can generate more power with their, with their panels and with their products. and they can generate more power with their, with their panels and with their product, their inverters. So you can basically power everything you want to power when you want to take.
Or an air conditioner is always a huge load, yep.
Yeah.
That's one of the good things about, I think, going forward for him is it applies to a different application. So it could be tiny homes, it could be boats, RVs or the van. He's fixed on the van right now because that's, because of his limited marketing capability. But all of that is a potential for this particular product.
And I may have missed this. So the, are they doing assembly at this facility? Or is it like building stuff completely from scratch?
They're doing both, really. So they, they are installing them. So they, they have people bring their vans and drive them in and they'll, you know, they have boxes that go on either side on the interior, which also kind of hold a bed. So it kind of, there's actually a few more, you know, things that you get rather than just a, a power pack. But they also have kits as well. So they can ship those kits and you can install them. So they're, they're doing both. But I know every time I've been out there, they've got another van in there that they're working on, so.
What do they usually sell for the kit? Do you have any idea? Let's say, just a regular van?
Around $15,000 is the number that comes to mind.
Yeah, it's funny. I was all prepared and I don't remember that in my notes. So that's probably about right. They're, they're not inexpensive.
Right.
But then folks who own these, these vans are not.
No, the vans are not inexpensive, so.
And that's one of the market opportunities he has is that his is a little better built. So he has designed a cabinet that's actually made out of steel. So instead of just a, you know, plastic or a plywood box and because they stack other stuff on there and make it part of the integrated insides of these vans, the kit itself is just better made, longer, longer lasting.
And they're sourcing, like those metal boxes, they're being sourced in Oregon. Trying to find a central Oregon source, but haven't quite got there yet. But he does have a source actually in UG that he's using to build and powder coat those and bring them over here.
Just a metal, metal garage cabinet company?
Yes, yeah, he's checked in with them.
Oh, yeah.
I think they're more focused on.
Yeah, they're, they're not looking to. So this is generally $2,000 per position, getting those new jobs ramped up, whatever equipment or supports they might need to get the person in the door. Do they have a facility in Redmond? Are they?
They are leasing.
Yeah.
In a building on 11th Street, which is owned by Composite Approach. But they are also looking at potentially a larger space. I think they're at about a thousand square feet, right? And, and so I think they very soon are going to need probably about double.
Lead more, yeah.
We're, we're working on that for them as well.
So yeah, exciting opportunity. As I say, I do remember seeing him at the Pub Talk last fall. And the, a lot of people knew him, real excited about that opportunity. So there's a motion, a proposed motion, and it is, it's been corrected for a $12,000 loan amount for six positions is what we're proposing.
So I move that we approve the request for economic development loan in the amount of $12,000 to Tiny Watts Solar.
Second, any other discussion? Seeing then Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Thank you very much. Very exciting.
Thank you, thank you.
We need to see more of you guys, actually.
Yes.
There's 282,000 in the fund. I would rather be out there in the community, so keep working, Steve.
Well, and their example of a cool new business in.
Yep.
In central Oregon.
Entrepreneurial spirits alive. Item number three, Treasury and Finance Report. So we are breaking at two o'clock today. I'm going to be dialing to the Eastern Oregon Counties Association Meeting through a Zoom meeting. So that's how we split the agenda today. And other Commissioners could join or whenever we want to do there.
A public meeting?
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's.
Senator Finley's group, that's not, that's not.
There's a phone call on Tuesday mornings. Are you getting that email? So I'm getting that email also.
Still getting all the, yeah, a lot of emails, yeah.
Okay.
This one is a public.
This is a public meeting, yes. Treasury and Finance Report. Thank you very much. We've got, yeah, the tag team now.
That's right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Robert Tintil, Chief Financial Officer.
And for the record, I'm Bill Coon, County Treasurer.
Well, as I say, the intention is to have more of that roundtable feel. And now we're off to the side today, but we're getting there.
We're getting there.
So today, yes, as you mentioned, we are going to tag team this. We're both going to be here today. As you know, Bill is the new County Treasurer. He was sworn in in January. The reports we're presenting today are through December. So I'm going to continue to present today's reports, both the Treasury and the financial report through December. Next month, when we come, we'll have two separate reports. Bill will come as the County Treasurer, presenting the Treasury report. And I'll submit an agenda item to come to the financial report. So now you get two great people to come present to you as well.
Do agenda items.
That was unsolicited, by the way.
Yeah, yeah.
Two great people.
So it's great having Bill on board. And so we're transitioning things to him and it's going smoothly as far as I can tell so far. So, yeah. So we'll just start in again today. We'll start with the Treasury report. A big, we're going to look at some macro events before we get to the specific Treasury report here. For this month, December, there were three main themes that were out in the macro environment. One was cooler inflation. The second one was a broadening of economic weakness. And thirdly, a strong labor market still continued. So first, talking about inflation a little bit. The US inflation figures did show welcomed improvement with the headline inflation dropping from 7.1 down to 6.5, although still high. But it's, it's, it looks like the trend may be coming down a little bit. Core inflation, core cooling went from 6% to 5.7% in December. So the, the headlines show that, yes, the, the inflation numbers appear to be going down, again, all still high. But the, it, it's still high enough where the feds are still wanting to continue with increasing interest rates. So some Fed officials have been vocal in support of further reducing the size of future rate hikes amid the presumed lag in policy impact and growing fear of a recession. And then others are less convinced inflation is on a meaningful and sustainable downward trajectory. So there is some question about will rates, the next increase is expected, February 1st is the next meeting. Will it be 25 basis points or 50 basis points? The market has built in a 25 basis point increase, 97% probability that the rates will be at 25%. The Fed could do something different, but the market also says, well, if the Fed is going to increase rates by 50 basis points, they should start making some little hints now so that it doesn't throw the market off. Although they are at the blackout window where they won't make comments until February 1st. So it's really going to see where we're at on February 1st. But the market is building in a 25 basis point increase at this time in the Fed rate. So that's about inflation. The broadening of economic weakness. So there's a number, a myriad of numbers that have come out. The housing has turned down, building permits are down, housing starts are down, existing home sales are down. In fact, they've been down 38% since January this year. And again, this is on the national level. I know CDD provides our, you know, current information for Deschutes County specifically. So in December, housing starts fell 1.4% after peaking in April. Housing starts fell 23% over the subsequent eight months. Again, this is on the national scale. But again, all this national data is what creates the policy, which has the impact on us. Retail sales, talking about retail sales, they were also down 1.1%. And part of the December decline was related to a 12.7% drop in gasoline prices, which was a welcome relief, right? However, that did reduce sales, gasoline station sales by 4.5%. But even if you exclude the gasoline station, retail sales were down 0.8%. So that's just another indicator that the feds will look at when they're looking at increasing rates. The positive news on mortgage applications has been that for the weekend in January 13th, just most recently, they jumped about 28% because mortgage rates have decreased from their high. They were 7.16, 7.16% back in October. And now it's down to about 6.23%, which is still historically high, but it is a more recent decrease, which had spurred a little more refinancing and home applications. And the third item was the, the strong labor markets. So although we've heard about all the big tech companies laying off thousands of employees, we're not seeing that in the job loss and the broader national data. So in fact, initial jobless claims were recently down to 190,000, which is a low level comparatively speaking. So there, there are a lot of layoffs, but again, that's more concentrated in the big tech, not nationally in all the other sectors. Finally, as we look at Treasury yields, as I mentioned, there's higher rates are, that are working. So the feds feel that, yes, because they've raised all these interest rates, it's actually helping the economy. As mentioned, they are expecting to see the rates increase by 25 basis points. And we'll see where the markets go relating to where will it top out? The Fed has said originally that they're going to hold rates about the 5% market, 5% rate. The market has said, well, we think it'll be at 4.86%. So they've built in a little lower rate. But again, we'll see how the next Fed beanie goes as far as where they think rates will come. So all that said, that's where we're at on the, the economy and how it affects rates. Our current six-month Treasury rate is 4.82, and, but a 10-year is 3.54. So we still have that inverted yield curve where long-term rates are lower than the short-term rates. Okay. Now we'll get to the county's portfolio and that's, should be what you have in front of you in your packet on page 12 for the Treasury and Finance Report. So our portfolio was 328 million at the end of December, which is a 26 million increase from November and an increase from last year as well.
Actually, it was a decrease. You just said an increase?
A decrease of 26.5. Yes, thank you.
Which means we're spending the, yeah, the tax dollars.
That's right.
Which is good.
Yep. The net investment income, this is the good news, is 563,000 or approximately 80,000 more than last month and 451,000 more than December 2021, which as you would expect, since interest rates were so low at that time. Year-to-date earnings are 1.9 million, almost 2 million, and are 1.2 million more than the year-to-date earnings last year. Just continuing with that theme. Concerning interest rates that we're receiving now, the LGIP did increase the rate over the last month. It was 2.85 and they increased it to 3.10% on 12, 8, December 8th during the month. However, more recently in January here, they did increase it again to 3.35%. So as we're talking about the revenue from last year to this year. So December of '21, the rate was 0.45%, so 45 basis points. The average rate in December '22 was 3.10. So it's a difference of 265 basis points, which that increases. That's a good increase to see. And we know they're.
If you have a portfolio like we do.
Exactly.
And if you're the government and you have all that debt, it's not so good.
That's, that's correct. And this, and again, this perspective is from the interest earnings perspective. It's not in the perspective of, you know, mortgage rates, borrowing rates, things in that nature. So the LGIP, they, they did have 12 increases in calendar year 2022 and eight increases in this fiscal year alone thus far since, since July. So again, I do anticipate the LGIP rate will continue to increase. And so that'll be a welcome sign for the funds that we hold in that for liquidity purposes as well. And our average portfolio yield is 2.13, so that'll continue to go up as we see some older investments mature off. And we are investing in higher percentages now.
We only, we actually only had 22, 23 million in the LGIP then? At the end of, what, December?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep. And 11 million in FIB and the rest was invested in the various investments that are in the chart that you see.
So First Interstate was actually paying more than, than the LGIP?
No, that's the, depending on which church you're looking at, that's the percent of portfolio.
Oh, the percent, okay. So what was First Interstate paying then?
They do, they match the LGIP rate up to the first $5 million, actually. And so whatever the, whenever the LGIP rate goes up or down, they'll match it on that percent.
On that day?
On that day.
Okay.
Yeah.
It'll First Interstate, right?
Yeah, that was a welcome item.
Who negotiated that?
Who knew? Who knew?
No comment, huh?
Question about the LGIP. So great that those rates are going up. Our, our cap on how much we have in the LGIP is staying the same though, right?
The cap increases every year according to Acola. Right now, it's about 57 million, just around 57 million. So we're way below that at the moment.
Okay.
So, and that's why we're talking with Bill, too. My comfort level, I'd like to build up the LGIP a little more. And again, that's more around liquidity and just having funds available in case there's expenditures that come up. We have the funding available. That's why a lot of counties keep money in there or cities, a lot of municipalities. They don't even invest outside of the pool.
Want to keep it, for us, we can always generally keep it close to the maximum published amount that the state allows.
And the ORS does allow you to go over the limit for 20 days, 20 calendar days. Because a lot of that times is, if we're getting especially tax receipts in, then it takes time, they know, to get that back out. Cities have 10 days, counties have 20 days.
They have a published amount that is the maximum.
That's right. Yep. And every year they increase it, like I mentioned.
And did you just say that we have about 13 million in there right now? And our, our cap is 57 million?
Currently, as of December, we have 22 million, almost 23 million, yes.
So do you know what we have in there right now? Did it, did we build it up then?
It's about 27 million today. I think it was 28 million.
So well below the cap.
Yep, yep.
And the rates are pretty good right now.
Yeah, very attractive short-term rates.
Yeah. So that just means we have more that is invested in the investment portfolio right now, earning a little higher interest rate as those items mature. That's when we'll decide, well, should we, Bill will decide, the County Treasurer will decide as far as how much he wants to invest out in the market, at what rate compared to where we are. And we'll work together on our cash flow, on what we need to maintain enough cash balance to pay our bills. So that's where we'll work cooperatively on that effort.
Aren't they doing like almost 5% or something? Is it for six months or a year? Because I know it's a reversal is what I'm seeing. The Bank of Idaho is coming into bend and they had some kind of, I'm sure it's limited to not $22 million or something, but they had a great return.
Oh, yeah, the short-term rates are a lot higher, as, as mentioned, than, than long-term rates. Absolutely.
Not to about three years. And then they start to flatten out.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move to page 13 in your packet. So there's the three graphs there. Basically, you can see the trend lines for the historic investment returns. And they all are on, the most recent months have been trending upwards. And we'll see that. The three-year portfolio balance is that middle graph. And you can see, you know, our portfolio has increased. And obviously typically in, in October, November, it increases for a short period of time until we distribute tax funds and then it goes back out as well to a normal level. And our five-year maturity level, pretty, pretty consistent for the first three years. We don't have as many investments out in the five-year bracket. The next page, 1415, it's the detail of the portfolio. So you can look at that and see the investments that were purchased in December of '21 and investments that were made in December of '22. And there's a difference in the rates there, obviously, as rates have increased. So it provides all the detail. Any questions on the?
Thank you for making it bigger.
Yes, absolutely.
Readable.
It definitely helped me.
Reading it readable.
Yes, yes. Any questions on the Treasury report before we move into FTE and some of the financials?
Go ahead.
Okay. Page 16 in your packet is the Position Control Summary. So during this past month, we've added 1.5 FTE increase. The DA actually decreased by a half FTE. Health Services added one. And as you can see right here, Finance has added one employee as well. So we welcome the Treasurer here. So we're still high level of, you can see the departments that have a high level of unfilled positions. Overall, a 10% of our workforce is unfilled, 124 positions. So that's quite a bit. So that's quite a bit countywide. So, and obviously you know that, we talk about that, but it is continuing. All right, page seventeen in your packet is a dashboard for the General Fund. Our revenues year to date in the General Fund is about thirty seven point one million dollars or eighty four point eight percent of the budget. As you know, this is through December, so it's, we're usually talking about fifty percent. You know, we should be at at least fifty percent of revenues and expenditures. We'll talk about the General Fund in more detail in a minute, but as you know, that's tax revenues that have come in. Our expenses are twenty one point seven million or about forty eight percent of budget. Last year we were at twenty point four million of, of expenses at this point in time and forty seven percent of budget. So we're on target where we should be, a little under in our expenses, which is good. As we'll see and you've heard before, typically a lot of that's due to personnel savings on, on our budgets because we have those unfilled positions. Uh, next page eighteen is, this is countywide, all funds combined, just a reminder of that. So total resources on eighteen in your packet, which is the countywide summary. Our year to date resources are seventy six percent. It's kind of the middle column there. Um, at three hundred and twenty six million was our budget and we're at year to date two hundred and forty six. So that equals at seventy six percent. We are projecting to be on target for the end of the year in our revenues. Page nineteen in your packet for the countywide summary on, on requirements or expenditures. We're at thirty nine percent, that middle column there, total at the bottom. So again, typically we're at fifty percent, you'd think halfway through the fiscal year, but we've only spent thirty nine percent thus far. We'll get into some of the detail in just a minute on the other funds. Flipping to page twenty one in your packet.
Robert, can I just ask you about that, the, the countywide summary projection? The projection says a hundred and ten percent. That, that sounds pretty good. I mean, that, uh, ten percent is a lot, a lot more than, you know, kind of a hundred percent. Can you, uh, do you have any, um, you know, can expla, I, I guess I could look in detail at these, these columns to see what's coming in higher, but what are the, what are the big drivers of the projection looking better than?
It's the ARPA funding, what it?
Yeah, that's, that's what it is. If you look at the percentages, that, I think the ARPA funding does skew that just a little bit because of where they project the revenues to come in at. You'll see that's at a higher amount and same with the, uh, which line is that? The Farron Expo six seventeen, even though it's only eighty eight thousand dollars above the projection, it's still a high percentage rate. So it's really looking at, most of them are within a hundred percent or, I mean, you know, some are down, but, or a couple are down. Most of them seem to be on target. I think the percent wise, it's a couple of them are just skewed by the.
But the, I thought we get, I thought we received the ARPA, maybe the second tranche of ARPA we received this fiscal year.
What, uh, we'll get to the, I'll, let's answer that when we get to the ARPA fund. What it is, is, uh, funds were received, but they were put in as deferred revenue. And so we're actually showing how much we've earned revenue as opposed to unearned previously.
And then there, oh, and then there was that LATCF.
Yes.
The, the little mini bonus for, for public lands counties.
Yep, we'll show that as received in the fund. Uh, we hadn't budgeted the revenue yet and so that will be coming. But you'll see that when we get to the ARPA fund. Okay, so let's go to page twenty two in your packet for the General Fund here. Um, and last month there was a question on percentage of tax received. So the property tax line current, you'll see here, we've received ninety four percent of our taxes of what we've budgeted thus far. But the question really is of the tax, full taxes that are assessed, how much have we received? And how is that compared to prior years? I remember that question coming up last month. So as a January first or, you know, around that date of each year, so this current year, we've received nine, ninety two point nine percent of the taxes that were assessed of what we're expecting to receive, the full value ninety two point nine. Last year at this time, it was ninety three point four percent. So it's a little lower this year, but if you look at the average of the last six years from twenty, uh, twenty twenty three, so currently as of January twenty twenty three through twenty eighteen, at this point in time, we collected ninety two point three percent of the full assessed taxes. So, so we're still doing better than average from twenty eighteen, a little less than last year, but higher than the average. So we are, we're on target basically where we think we should be at this point.
And that, that's an interesting possible economic indicator, just more information thinking, okay, who's, who's being able to pay that tax burden outright or financing it because you can do it in installments also.
Right, and we are upright February and May, people can pay the other two, the other thirds, two thirds. Um, and two years ago, it was ninety two point six percent collected at the full assess. So we're, again, we're a little better than two years ago, but not doing as well as last year.
And only a, only a fraction of a percentage.
Correct, yeah, yeah. We're on, seem on.
Still a lot, you know, it's like, seems like a fairly tight range looking over the last few years and we're still within that.
Exactly. Um, as, as you know, you've heard before, the other on resources on the General Fund is we've talked about the, um, uh, County Clerk's Office being down in their, in their revenue. Uh, and we've heard about that. Otherwise for the expenditures, the requirements, uh, the savings are a lot due to personnel savings. So we'll be on target for the General Fund. At this point, we're still projecting the fund balance at the end there of two point three million, uh, higher than what we projected. So it should be end at thirteen point seven million where we budget eleven point three on that last. Flipping to the next page, twenty three for the Juvenile Fund.
The Clerk's Office is significantly down, you know, the seven hundred thousand.
Yep, absolutely. And I think we talked a little bit about that at the, I thought, I think we did at the budget, mid-year budget meeting.
That's recording mortgage documents.
Exactly.
Amazing.
Who would want to refinance, raise your rate? Nobody, unless you had to.
Uh, page twenty three, the Juvenile Fund, uh, the projected save, the main thing here is just the personnel savings is their biggest variance of four hundred and sixty five thousand they're expecting to save by the end of the year. TRT Fund on page twenty four in your packet. The, the news is we're still projecting to be over from what we budgeted of the thirteen point five was budgeted. We're projecting to be in at thirteen point seven at this time. However, you might have seen the recent property tax numbers that have come through. We're at six point five percent over what we were last year. However, at this time last month, we were at seven point four percent higher. So we declined December, which this is what's reported in December from November activity because it's that month lag to get in there. So it did decline, our year to date did go down. So we'll still watch this, monitor this to see how it ends up at the end of the year. Uh, you can see our total fund balance at the end, the projection is forty, four million, ninety four thousand. That's just a little bit lower than, than we were projecting previously before the declines in the revenue. And again, the four million dollars is held in reserve and that's dedicated for the commitment we've made to the Sun River Service District.
And, and Robert, if I, if I read those recent TRT reports correctly, we are, um, we're, we're over four hundred thousand higher than we were for the last year. But we're only like seventy six thousand higher than we've budgeted. So we budgeted higher than we received last year, you know, for this year. And I, you know, seventy six thousand is not that, we're not, we're not that much higher than budgeted, so.
Right.
You know, I, I mean, that, that to me, you know, just, uh, um, the fact that we're up significantly from, from last year, but it's, it's a very narrow amount higher than we budgeted, you know, makes me ask, well, should we have budgeted lower? Should we be thinking about that for next year?
Correct.
Just our projection, you know, our crystal balling for next year.
Correct, and that's when we get into that discussion of the budget. That's why we, we also made comments about, we, we tend to budget more conservatively for exactly these types of situations when revenue does come in lower. That way you don't have to readjust your expenses and, and look at that. And this is a good case of exactly why sometimes we, we do that. It's still a guess and estimate where you think the trends are going. But if you're going to error on the side, you would error more on the cautious side than being too optimistic. Okay, page twenty five in your packet, here's the ARPA, uh, funding. And to answer your question, so B has a note on the revenue under the line Local Assistance and Travel Consistency. You can see in the middle column there and year to date. So we did, um, receive the actual two point three million already and we expect to receive another two point three, um, coming in as well. And so, uh, we didn't budget the revenue at this point, but the actuals have been received. And your other point on, uh, I, the note for item C, that we received the revenue in fiscal year twenty two, but it was unspent at the end of last fiscal year. So it was carried over as deferred revenue. And as we make the expenditures, that's when we recognize the revenue. So same thing, based on how we've done this, the same thing will happen next year. Any unspent funds at the end of the year will carry over, we, we won't recognize all that revenue because we'll carry it over as revenue next year to match the expenditures, since it's an expenditure driven grant there as well, even though we got the funds up front. Uh, the main expenditures to this are, is in the, um, services to disproportionately impacted communities there under the requirements. We are still projecting at this point the full expenditure of fifteen point three million dollars in that. Again, six point seven was in childcare, early education funding, six point nine in housing support for unhouse persons and over seven point three million in affordable housing permits. So the ARPA team will be monitoring the expenditures, especially as we're starting this fiscal year to make, checking in quarterly, um, if not monthly, as far as are you spending the money? Are you on target? Are you going to be able to? Uh, so that if not, we can come back and have those conversations about any reallocating any of the funds if they need to be repurposed. So we'll be actively monitoring that and bringing that back to you as well. And then page twenty seven for the Sheriff's Office. The biggest story here, their revenues are about online, their requirements are under. The total requirements, you'll see their projection of about seven hundred and sixteen thousand under where they'll be to date um, at the end of the year. And on fund balance, total fund balance, they're expecting to be one point five over from what they had budgeted uh, for their ending fund balance there. Health Services, page twenty eight. This first report for Fund two seventy four is the role of, of the various health services funds. Their resources are expecting to be three point two higher. They're projecting at this point by the end of the year. Their expenditures, four point nine under, which means the total fund balance for what they're projecting, again, this is their funds combined, uh, will be eight point four million higher in their, um, ending fund balance than what they had budgeted. And we'll look at the next few funds, that kind of detail out those funds. So the first one is their Admin Fund on page twenty nine. Got a little bit more in some federal grants and of course, all these funds, if there's interest investments, most of them get higher interest earnings since the rates are higher. We've talked about that. Uh, their biggest savings, of course, is in personnel projections because they aren't filling their positions. So that's where their savings is. So they're, in their Admin Fund, they are expecting to end the fund balance there, end the year, four million dollars in their fund balance, which is one point four million than they anticipated for their Admin Fund. Page thirty for their Behavioral Health Fund, two seventy four. Their total resources, they are anticipating to be about one point five million over from what their projections are. And this is the variance in the last column. Their total requirements, they're expecting to be spent three point four million less than what they were anticipating. Um, I do want to point out transfers, uh, note F there. They are estimating that the Behavioral Health Fund will return approximately one million dollars to the county in fiscal year twenty three. And that was part of the, uh, last budget session as far as if there were general fund reserves left over, they would pay back the General Fund. Uh, so they are anticipating about a million dollars there. And even including that, the total fund balance at the end of the year, they're anticipating to be four point three million higher than what they were anticipating. They budgeted about a two point five million fund balance, but they are projecting at this point, ending the year at six point eight million dollars.
Well, if there's a million dollars returning to the General Fund, I bet we could spend it on facility needs for the Health Department. I mean, it'll go right back out, yeah.
Yep.
And the reason that the requirements are so much lower, again, is that driven by vacancies?
Yeah, it's mostly in their Personal Services account. Yep, that's three million of it right there. Yep.
Right, I see, okay.
Page thirty one is Public Health, Fund two seventy four. Uh, similar story, so their resources, uh, they are projecting to be over, uh, one point four million dollars basically higher than what they anticipated, um, budgeted. And their requirements will be four hundred and sixty five thousand less than they've budgeted. And you can see right now, year to date, their expenditures are at thirty nine percent. I should have, again, pointed out the percent on each of these you have in your report. And most of them are all under the fifty percent mark, which is, we're halfway through the fiscal year. Community Development, uh, page thirty two. Again, they're anticipating their revenues to be one point eight million. And this, as you know, when you get the monthly reports from CDD, that, um, their, their permitting activity is down just as I mentioned nationally, so it's a trend that we see as well. And they are expecting, uh, or they are seeing a savings in their unfilled positions. As you know, they have a number of positions that are unfilled as well. So they're projecting now at the end of the year that their total fund balance will be a negative two hundred thousand dollars because of the change in the activity as well. I'm going to go to page thirty five, Road CIP. Um, here their, uh, just an item to mention is their capital outlay under the requirements. They are still projecting to spend out of the twenty eight million, even though they've only spent, uh, twelve million, twelve point seven million thus far in capital outlay. They are projecting by the end of the year that they'll have spent twenty seven point, about four million dollars in that fund.
Robert, you just said something about, uh, two ninety five, but their actual, their balance will actually be, it's just, it's a couple hundred thousand less than what we originally projected, right? It's going to be like one point four million and it's just, it's down the two hundred and thirty three thousand. Is that not correct?
Oh, you're talking about Fund two ninety five? Yes, their projection, the fund balance to be, uh, two hundred and thirty three thousand less than what they had budgeted.
Originally, we thought it was going to be one point six.
Yes, and they're projecting one point four approximately. Um, page thirty seven, Solid Waste, Fund six ten. Basically, you look at them, that fund, they seem to be on target. They're rejecting to be on target by the end of the year, although their current expenditure requirements is at forty one percent instead of fifty, but they're still projecting by the end of the year, they'll spend those. So, um, they're on target there. And let's see. Risk Management Fund, page forty, forty four, Fund six seventy. Uh, the rest seem to be on target. They seem, they're on track as well. Uh, they do have some slight, uh, increase in their revenues. That's mostly due to interest on investments. Otherwise, they seem to be on target what they're projecting at this point. Health Benefits Fund, page forty five.
So workman's comp has gone up then, is that? On the, um, risk management?
Yeah, they did, they are trending higher than what they typically would be. So while they will see, um, a savings in their general liability, they are anticipating that their workers' compensation will be a little over, so they'll offset within the fund as a whole. And, uh, Health Benefits Fund, they, for their requirements, what they're spending out of their fund, they are expecting to spend all of their, uh, budgeted amounts this year. And, you know, we are seeing health costs increase, uh, year over year. Nationwide, we're seeing that increase. In fact, I think Kathleen just shared a slide with us the other day. Uh, nationally, they're seeing eleven percent, I think it was eleven percent increase in their expenditures for most plans. Uh, so we're not unusual for that. A lot of pent up, a lot of people now being seen for things that they hadn't been seen for before. So we'll see where that ends up. They're still not far off from where their projections, where they're at. Finally, um, last one, page forty six, nine one one. Again, same story for their requirements, personnel expenditures, that their biggest, um, savings there, but they just need to, as you know, hire people to fill those roles. And, uh, that's where they're seeing their savings. Otherwise, their revenue is on target with the exception of the. with the exception of the hire for interest revenues. Any other, any, oh, we're a bit over, sorry about that. I've got a meeting to go to. Yes.
I wasn't even watching the time.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep, thank you.
Nice to see you.
Pretty quiet this time.
So at this time, we're going to recess until 3 o'clock. And we'll get...
Could have proceeded without me, yeah, we knew I'd just be five minutes or so.
Okay.
Okay, so, next agenda item. Public hearing preparation for commercial activity in conjunction with farm use in the Sisters area. Oh, there we go, thank you so much. So as you can see, this is kind of a work, we're working on a work setting session for Monday afternoon, so that was what we're doing here. And we're really gonna aim for doing it upstairs in the near future, we just didn't have the AV set up for it. So that's how we got down here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon Commissioners, for the record Nathaniel Miller, Associate Planner with the Deschutes County Planning Division. The item we are here to discuss is a work session item to prepare for a public hearing this Wednesday, January 25th. The proposal is for a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use to establish a meadery, or honeywinery. To provide a short summary, the meadery is proposed at 68540 Highway 20 and is just southeast of the city of Sisters. The parcel is approximately eighty-four acres and is within the exclusive farm use zone. The property is developed with a single-family dwelling and farm structures on the south end. Gated pastures are to the west, north, and to the east. The proposed meadery would be approximately two acres in area and be located on the southwest side of the property close to Highway 20. The maps should hopefully provide some reference to location and general character of the property. As noted in the record, the proposed meadery would be comprised of three distinct aspects. Mead production, winery operations, and winery-related events. Descriptions of these aspects are in staff decision. Descriptions of these aspects are in staff decision. Briefly, the hearings officer denied the proposal on the basis of the application failed to meet the standards for a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use, demonstrating that the meadery would be incidental and subordinate to the farm use on the property. And these standards are outlined in Deschutes County Code 1816030 sub E. The hearings officer also denied the proposal on the grounds that it failed to meet the standards of Deschutes County Code 1816040 sub A 1 and 2. These standards are addressed through a farm impacts test. The goal of the work session today is to understand how we can best prepare the board for the hearing and what specific parts of the application the board would like to know more about. As for the hearing and helping us plan, staff would like to know if there's a specific issue area the board would like to have addressed from staff, the applicant, or the appellant during the public hearing. Staff would also like to know the board's preference on setting time limits for the applicant and/or members of the public providing testimony. And with that, I would like to open it up to questions and/or direction from the board.
Any questions to get started?
I'm still trying to get my head around what the difference is between this and a winery. You know, if someone came in with essentially the same application, but they had X number of acres of grapes, would there be, would we have the kinds of questions that we have about this application? Or is it really, you know, that we think that making a honey wine mead is different than making wine from grapes?
That's a great question. Commissioner Chink, I can provide you with an answer real quick. So when you look at the ORSs that apply to wineries in Oregon, specifically on the exclusive farm use zone property and the provisions within our local code, there is some language within the standards themselves which call out, which use language such as grapes, acres of vineyards. And so it's staff's understanding that there's not an equal correlation between the standards that we have for wineries and what's being proposed as a honey winery.
So this is, this is, in the eyes of the state, this is different than a winery based on vineyards?
That's staff's interpretation.
So my thought, maybe you can give us a little clarity or just be open for the public hearing itself. But incidental and subordinate to the farm use on the property. I think we have a winery example here in Deschutes County where there are some grapes there, but there's other fields of grass being grown and probably baled and sold. So there's other, the balance of other farming activities opposed to the balance of, you know, volume of mead produced relative to commercial activities and events. You know, so it's like, I'm just thinking the proportions of those is what may help me make a decision at some point. And I, you know, as I say, I could study it in the record, but this will be for everybody to think about. You know, when we're reading these words, help us, help me with the concept of, you know, the meadery as a proportion of the total farm operations or the meadery and its proportion of actions, activity. Yeah, so I'm looking forward to it. You know, I think of, as I say, this will all come out, but you know, honey production on the property opposed to imported honey, you know, off the property and other honey operations and promotion of pollinators, healthy pollinator population locally, or is it seasonally? So I'll have all kinds of questions, but that kind of stuff will come out.
So it looks like that they actually have access right by that one barn that's next to the road, Highway 20?
That's correct.
Right, there's a little drive-through there. And everything is next to Highway 20, even though the property goes over to 126?
That is correct.
So do they raise hay there or something on the rest of the property?
I believe hay production is part of their farm use, yes.
And so when we're, when we're looking at these questions of proportions of, you know, primary agricultural production versus the amount of money you're going to make on events or a tasting room. It's not that there's not agricultural production happening all over this property. It's just that the value of that agricultural production is expected not to be very big in relation to what they would make from the wine, you know, the honey wine tasting and events.
Right, and so kind of getting at the hearings officer decision, what the hearings officer found was that there wasn't a quantitative analysis done in a specific detail that helped him understand how the meadery would be incidental and subordinate to the farm use on the property. So it's understanding of what are those farm uses? And then maybe using those metrics, you know, such as area, time, profit, to kind of help explain that balance.
Yeah, so that they're, in the, in the application or in discussions with the applicant, do we have any kind of sense of, you know, how much honey it takes to make the amount of, the amount of mead that they're talking about?
That's a great question. I think that we should ask the applicant that question in the public hearing and have him provide us some additional details.
Yeah, because I mean, to kind of go back to the wine, you know, the vineyard winery comparison, I just, you know, if it takes a whole lot of honey to make the amount of honey wine that they're talking about, and that honey would have a substantial, you know, commercial value in and of itself in the same way that, you know, growing grapes in the absence of a winery would have a substantial amount of value in and of itself. And I, you know, I still, in my mind, I still want to, you know, compare the two things. You know, even if the state doesn't really connect them closely, I just, you know, if there's an argument that it takes this much honey to make this much honey wine, and it takes this much land to, you know, let your bees essentially graze on to make that much honey, then, you know, I think that's a, I would find that a fairly compelling argument. Without, without any sense of the proportions of, you know, how much honey you need and how, you know, how much land you need to make that much honey. I don't, it's hard to, it's hard to evaluate that.
Are there any like uses in the state, or is this a very unique and novel application?
My sense is that they do exist in other parts of the state, but they're not as known. They are rare.
Great. Yeah, so this is the opportunity just to kind of get prepared for this. So this will be a public hearing on the matter on Wednesday. And then we'll work through the process of the record and possible decision. Anything else? Yeah, go ahead, Nathaniel.
Yes, does the board have any preferences for setting time limits during the public testimony or testimony given by the applicant?
So this is an applicant and an appelle, well, the applicant is appealing and there's another party appealing. So, yeah, help me through that real quick. So the applicant itself will be wanting to really make the case as an appellant. But as I say, I mean, I think of 30 and then, you know, 15 minutes if there's other, well, yeah. 30 minutes for the applicant appellate. This is, you know, this is the, my application, my appeal. I'm sure that, referring to the person that made the application, wanting to lay it out there. And then after that, yeah, I mean, if it's three minutes for all the other testimony or is another appellant kind of given, afforded a little bit more?
Yeah, there's only one appellant, so it would just be up to the board to decide how long you'd like them to speak.
Yeah, it is, Commissioners, it is unique because the, the application was administratively approved by staff. So there was one appellant, but that appellant prevailed before the hearings officer. So unless I understand correctly, Central Oregon Land Watch didn't then appeal the denial. They, that was what they were seeking. So there's just one applicant appellate. So, yeah, maybe 30, and then you can probably just go with the threes, three minutes apiece. Or there's no obligation to provide the other initial appellant any additional time. Our assistant legal counsel, land uses confirming.
Okay, so I was looking at the memo here. So Central Oregon Land Watch contacted Planning Division in January. So they, they got involved in the, just the administrative decision?
They appealed the administrative decision.
That's correct.
And that's what brought it to the hearings officer? Okay. Well, as I say, so yeah, 30 minutes at this point and then three minutes for everybody else if we go through here. 30 minutes may be a lot, you know, I don't know. But that's fine. We give them, give them that time.
Yeah, I have additional questions beyond the, the time, the time brackets we're talking about. So go ahead and finish that.
And we do this, yeah, for procedural, so people understand what to expect. And as I say, there's a style of the chair that, you know, I mean, if things are flowing, we're not, I'm not cutting off hard. So we'll get through it together. So there, go ahead.
So, um, so there's a hearings officer decision. And that whole hearings process was triggered by an appeal from Land Watch. Is, is the hearings officer decision essentially consistent with Land Watch's arguments against this application? Or was Land Watch arguing different things?
So the hearings officer denied the proposal based on two points that were raised by Central Oregon Land Watch. And those two points were the incidental subordinate test and then the farm impacts test. There were other items that Central Oregon Land Watch brought to the discussion that the hearings officer addressed but didn't agree with.
Yeah, we'll do some homework on this, have a public hearing on the matter, and go from there. So thank you very much for a little bit of preparation in front of Wednesday.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Here we go. Next item is Deschutes County Outdoor Lighting Ordinance Update. Tarek Rawlings.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Tarek Rawlings, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. And just like you noticed, today is an update to the Dark Skies ordinance review process. This has been underway since November of 2021. This was essentially a work plan item that had been on the book. Hopefully, this is a somewhat familiar item to you guys. This was basically on a work plan item directed to the Planning Commission for review of the existing ordinance and what they might want to do with any kind of updates. In the early spring of 2022, the Planning Commission basically held a public panel that had eight different participants on it that were largely from kind of the Dark Skies community already. There, there were folks that were astronomers, folks that were otherwise involved in astrotourism or resource management, things like that. There were also just kind of members of the community that showed up. There was overwhelming support for basically Dark Skies best practices. And then eventually, the Planning Commission conveyed a two-part motion to the board. That was basically, one was to revisit the actual ordinance language and update it to best practices. The second was to pursue an educational campaign. And so we've talked a little bit about last year, some of the implications of revisiting the program, some of the board's preferences on what they would like to see with revisiting the program. So we're basically back here again to give you an update on, within the memo, there's a lot of information. There's some on best practices for wildlife and humans and what Dark Skies benefits really entail. There's also, and that's really captured a lot in the attachments near the end of the memo there. But really, the question before the board today, aside from, you know, if you have any other comments on the information provided in these attachments in the memo here, is whether or what next steps you'd like me to pursue. So whether we, you have amendments in mind that you'd like to initiate as legislative text amendments right away? Anything else you'd like me to research? Moving into, another option could be moving into an educational dissemination program, either distributing existing materials or putting together new ones. A third option would be convening another panel, maybe composed of folks or individuals that you have in mind that you might be seeking different perspective from, or, or anything else really? Any other kind of compositional notes you might have for a panel? Or, or anything else you might have, any other directions for next steps? So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on the content of the memo or the attachments. But looking for some next steps, and I anticipate I'll, I'll probably come back here in the near future and let you know what our plan is, whether that's a panel or educational materials or a combination thereof. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
So big picture, Planning Commission and staff are kind of completed for a point. And now today, we're making a decision about where we're going.
Correct.
So I guess one of my visions is, you know, so changing county code and then having code enforcement for the, you know, those dark sky scenarios out there is, is, you know, some people's wish. And I would love to get, you know, disseminating education and even outreach to very specific, you know, anybody and everybody. It's so tricky right now. How do we get people engaged, you know? It's like, we put out a press release, we spend some money advertising even, or do whatever we do. And then I never heard about that. So how do we get the word out? You know, so my point is jumping right from that code enforcement, oh, your neighbor just dialed you in because now you're guilty of something. It's like, oh, how do we bridge to education? That's the tricky part right now.
Yeah.
Sure, excuse me, Commissioner.
Yeah, I think that, I think that most people in our community value being able to see the stars, you know, value wildlife, don't want to bother their neighbors. So it really is a, it's more of, the biggest need, in my opinion, is awareness and understanding. And you can, you can accomplish a certain amount of that through regulatory actions. But, you know, if you haven't done a whole bunch of education and outreach in advance of that, then, you know, A, your regulatory efforts are not going to be that successful, and they're going to result in lots of conflict and drama. And B, you'll probably have to take more regulatory actions than you would have had to if people just understood and understood the simple things that they could do to, to help preserve our nighttime skies. So I, I don't necessarily have an opinion on what, all the pieces of the package that we should be moving forward. But I really do, I think that education and outreach is really important. And I, I also am aware that there may be opportunities to secure some of the funding that's necessary to do the education campaign from Visit Central Oregon through the Futures Fund Program, which we helped to encourage, encourage them to create, which is great news. But, you know, I think that should be a foundational piece of this. And, you know, to kind of play off your comments or concerns about, about whether people see an advertisement in the newspaper or not. In this day and age, outreach, outreach and education campaigns are way more sophisticated than they were, once were. And, you know, I would imagine that we, there would have to be, you would have to have a social media component as well as like a print or, you know, you know, TV or radio advertising component. And one of the best ways to, to reach people is to go to them, to go to homeowners associations or go to, you know, annual gatherings, you know, block parties, you know, in various, various parts of the, of the county. I mean, if this was a, if this was a tri-county type effort, there, there's great opportunities to go, you know, to be at the fair with a booth or, you know, go to like Lord's Acres event and things like that. And just talk to people where they're, they're gathering anyway and thinking about their, their neighborhood. So it, I guess that all just goes to say that, you know, education and outreach is really important. It's also not cheap. So I, I hope that. So I hope that, I hope that Visit Central Oregon is interested in supporting an education campaign. And I'd also like to see the county, you know, provide support as needed to have a successful effort to reach people.
Tarek, I do like some of the things that are already in our legislation from 1994, such as holiday lighting for forty-five days.
Sure, absolutely.
And the motion sensitive.
How many days has it been? I got some lights on my front porch still.
Wow. And then the motion sensitive that said for no longer than twenty minutes. So some of these that are on here, I would really hate to lose them. And the other thing I was just thinking of is, what, if you're a farm and you have to have your animals under a light program for reasons, would that be exclusionary because it is farm?
That one is included in the exemptions list. It's basically practices that are typical of agricultural use. So that, so something like a horse being born or night harvest, that's included in that type of use. But just to the motion sensor exemption as well, there's been some comment of not doing away with some of those things. But just to that exact example, they've wanted to refine some of the numbers, for example, for some of the exemptions, like making it maybe a lower minute type of an increment, five minutes at a time or something. There was, just to that exact example, there was a notion that if you just have a tiny break between these twenty-minute lit moments, then you basically have a continuous lighting all night long in some instances.
You mean when the deer are going around my house?
Exactly. If there's some motion that's constantly there, exactly. So in that instance, it's refinement might be more of what, you know, some of the public input has steered at. But you're exactly right. There's already quite a few exemptions and really pretty robust language at points in that ordinance, so.
My impression was that some of the concerns with the existing, you know, it's great that we have an existing outdoor lighting, that we have DC Chapter fifteen dash, fifteen dot ten. It's great that we have that, but it's kind of technologically outdated.
Exactly.
You know, this refers to incandescent bulbs and, you know, we live in the age of compact fluorescents and LEDs and all this other stuff. So, I mean, I would imagine that it would be useful. That would be a significant part of the update was just kind of catching up with the technology that exists today.
Absolutely. And that was a sentiment of the previous panel. We had an electrical expert who actually works for City of Bend kind of weigh in on how you have more or less, you know, two-thirds of these halogen sodium bulbs are not super commonplace anymore. And almost all of them are LED or some type of lower wattage that can still have impact. So you're exactly right. That sentiment, I hope, is carried through these memos. But that's really something we'd be looking to for any kind of technical update, those technical specs, exactly.
What about doing a code update? And then, as I say, I worry that a code update may end up putting more violation opportunities in there that's not intended or, you know, not intended by everyone or whatever. How can we do an update and then review it before it gets, you know, put out there?
Certainly.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, that's a really great point.
Because, as I say, I mean, if we have this, you know, beautiful set of work updated and all this thing, and then there's just like one or two, how about we dial that back a little bit? That may be the right spot to be. And I don't know exactly what that is.
Sure. I would just say, one example was the Planning Commission's process. I think they got into that pretty early where there was examples of language changes. And it was very early and lots of different hard changes that were being proposed. And so they opted to, I think, collect just general public input through that panel. And that informed their next steps about amendments. I think that's one suggestion. You know, we could work with legal counsel if you had other concerns just in the interim. But that's one suggestion of what we've already kind of seen with the PC.
Good. Also, as I say, I'm not opposed to having that code, you know, code review and update. It's just, yeah, that last step, thinking, okay, is it, just because there's going to be a lot of opinions there.
Sure.
And we also want to synchronize this stuff or coordinate this stuff because, you know, the outreach and education is definitely, you know, foundational and important. But if we are going to have an updated code, then the outreach and education could also be tailored to what the new code says as opposed to just kind of speaking generally about, you know, about like, about lighting.
Well, thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, Will Groves, your planning manager. I think you're asking all the right questions here. You know, there's a number of stakeholders that are involved. There's people who'd like to see darker skies. There's, you know, our code enforcement department that's looking for something that's clearly enforceable and minimizes their engagement with the public to those things that are, you know, serious violations that are verifiable and that there's a meaningful way to engage with them. So I think what you would see out of this, you know, typically the way we would engage with this would be to assemble kind of a stakeholder panel to get some experts, to get some electricians, agricultural users. Take a look at the existing code, have them talk it over for a couple of meetings, see what's important. Make sure that, you know, COBA and COR, to the extent that they could send a representative, were there as well to talk about, you know, the building implications about this. Try to make sure that, you know, whatever regulations that were, you know, contemplated would be ones that would, you know, sort of most bang for the buck. And then if, coming out of that process, we would return to you, let you know what that looked like. If you gave us another go-ahead, at that point, we would begin a regulatory process through the Planning Commission that, pun intended, would have a lot of light switches in it. This is, you know, you could do this and, you know, it's a bigger lift for code enforcement or it's more, imposes more on citizens or you could do that, which has less imposition or is simpler to implement. Or, you know, there's a lot of different ways jurisdictions have approached this. So the notion would be is that if you did authorize this to go forward through a multi-step check-in, that ultimately it would come to you as a legislative package with a lot of switches for, you know, what level of regulation you want to engage with. And at that point, hopefully, we'd have a lot of great feedback from the community about what was important to them. You know, certainly, we don't want to get in the way of obstructing agricultural practice or, you know, needlessly regulating people's holiday lights in a way that would be unwelcome. And at that point, I think it would be easier actually to do the outreach. One of the things I'm hoping that comes out of this is actually a simplification. I would love this chapter to get shorter as part of this so that people could easily tell, you know, just reading the chapter, what was allowed and what wasn't. And then if the outreach is targeted to that more simple explanation of what's allowed, that may be easier for people to understand.
But I just kind of go to that vision of, you know, the satellite view of the continent. You know, how could we just dial that down a few notches? I mean, that's the goal, right? I mean, how valuable. And then you think of the dark skies in, you know, kind of Nevada, Northern California, Idaho, through the central of the state of Oregon. And we're right on the edge of that. You know, there's a huge swath of dark skies in the west here.
Yeah, it was interesting. I don't know if you saw in the memo that there's, you know, significant tourist dollars associated with that, that people come specifically to be in that dark space.
You mean when we had the eclipse?
Yeah.
Great space.
That was pretty dark, yes.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, they all came.
So, yeah, practicing the information dissemination as in, you know, that satellite view. How can we get people to say, oh, yeah? And then Sun River is a great example of dialing it down over the years, so.
Yeah. One of the public comments or one of the email messages we got about this was suggesting, even when I added an additional piece and said, how about incentivizing changeouts of lighting for people? And you could imagine, I mean, if, you know, if entities like Visit Central Oregon are getting serious about putting grant dollars into this, you could imagine establishing a pot of money to be able to, you know, offer people, you know, this very nice, attractive, you know, new outdoor light fixture at a discounted price, you know, if you just pledged to, you know, to install it at your house or.
Yeah, there might be some sort of rebate program, you know, where somebody shows their receipt from Home Depot that they bought a certain, you know, shielded specification of light. I think I mentioned when I started here, we had a few from the original implementation of this. Apparently, we actually had shielded lights that we would give to people in code enforcement. It appears a light and a shield, you know, and they had a closet full of those. Couple were left.
Yeah, I recall meeting regularly with our code, then enforcement specialists, probably a decade ago, to really learn about our program. And they shared that in the 1990s, when we initiated it, it was a multi-year phase-in program because it was so unique and so new. And we did provide a lot of incentives over a number of years to phase it in. But it did begin with the code. Now we just, we may have additional resources. And the Futures Fund program could be fantastic for both providing incentives, outreach, education, and then maybe a lesser burden for code compliance now for a couple of years. Maybe the goal is incentives and education and outreach for the first couple of years, but you still have the code to rely on should you need to, should we need to at some point.
Yeah, in terms of the pieces, I'm coming around to the idea that, you know, you want to update the code first but then not do a lot of heavy enforcement for a while and have some really good education and outreach time and, you know, maybe offer some incentives for hardware changeouts before you start asking code enforcement to go and talk to people.
Yeah, I think that's a wise approach, especially given that, you know, code compliance, you know, they're dealing with some life and safety issues that, you know, that we're, typically, you wouldn't want to allocate a lot of resources to this. So to the extent that, you know, it can be done through mass outreach rather than individual engagement, that would be ideal.
Maybe there's creative ways to engage the tourism, the broader tourism industry in this. I mean, you know, Visit Central Oregon providing grant funding is great. But, I mean, you know, if, you know, Worthy Brewing's got an observatory on top of their brewery and, you know, they want to offer people, you know, a free six-pack of beer if they come in and show a receipt for the new lighting that they bought. Or, you know, out at Sun River, you know, if the Nature Center out there in Sun River could work a deal with, you know, some of the Sun River area businesses, you know, there could be some real ways that the broader tourism industry contributes to the effort.
Any thoughts, Commissioner Dare? Because it looks, we're kind of nodding a lot of heads here. We want to make sure we're giving you clear direction from today.
Exactly. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Do you have enough clear direction? Yeah. I think that you should have people, you should have people besides the people that really want it all dark. Because where I walk, I want to see where I'm going at night because I've got all kinds of wild creatures, you know, and you never know when you're going to run into one. So, yeah, I mean, I understand this downward shield, but do they actually sell light poles that have lights on the top of them then?
I'm not sure. I could look into.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you're asking people and I'm thinking like, okay, that's something that I wasn't really aware of, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Those are the little details.
Well, and that might be a benefit of, if it sounds like there might be some support for holding another panel before the board. And if you have, if that was the notion, there might be, if you have folks in mind, like a specific agricultural role or someone that you either specifically have in mind or want me to go find, I'd be happy to put together a panel that basically reflects those types of perspectives you might be looking for. But, yeah, exactly, looking for direction on essentially whether.
I see that Sisters is already part of this. And, yeah, there's, we could say Redmond, but it's Washington State, so, yeah, there's.
Oh, and the Example.
Yeah, of all the cities. So, yeah.
And those are more like a case study of similar ordinances. But you're right, the International Dark Skies Association does designate other jurisdictions.
But then the other side of the story is, I've noticed houses that aren't properly ID'd with their house number on them. And is that something that is excluded so they could actually have a light on that number?
That's something I think would likely be an exemption, something we, if there wasn't an existing exemption, something that could be built in just because of fire, life and safety.
Right.
You know, addressing and things like that. That's another really, really valuable angle, I think, to review the lighting ordinance through.
But it definitely looks like it needs to be updated.
Sure.
So it sounds like there's support for proceeding with a code, you know, amendment project, getting some good balance and definitely leading with education materials the whole time. Looking for those opportunities, I guess, is what I'd say.
And so the way that you were describing it, that would be kind of, that would be work embedded within a panel. So that the panel, when you would put together this panel and they would help guide all of those pieces.
Exactly. The panel would be likely an earlier phase of a multi-step process like Mr. Groves was describing, just first gathering that input, maybe using that to refine our existing language, then put together potentially actual amendments and then eventually maybe go through a Planning Commission legislative process for those amendments, all the while working on education, working on other public input. Yeah, I envision this being, that being one of the earlier stops in this multi-phase process, if that was the desire of the commission.
And over the years, there's sometimes a discussion about, you know, overhead parking lights or just, you know, hip-high bollards throughout the parking lot where you really do get some good lighting at a lower level instead of the big, you know, lights up in the top of the parking lot. And, you know, the flag, just like we were saying, you know, sometimes they put a couple of nice bright floodlights on the American flag, but you can do it from above to keep a light on it at night too. So there's just those choices that can be made in support of dark skies.
Or you can take your flag down at night and put it back up in the morning.
And just, it sounds like we had maybe one commissioner in support of a panel, maybe making a panel similar to the PC process. Is there any support from the other two commissioners for a similar process?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. As I say, everybody was kind of nodding their head on everything.
Definitely. That's what I mean. It seems very supportive.
Clear direction, yep.
I don't want somebody going, yeah, going by my house and yelling at me because I forgot my barn, my loft light. I leave it on and I, that's, my husband yells at me. That's his job. So, yeah, no, the lights.
Remote control.
Yeah, I need remote control for my barn. That is for sure.
All that technology, that's a huge part of what we need to update certain.
Well, my cameras are really good, so that's the good news.
This day and age, you probably could, when we're talking about giving people incentives for equipment, they probably could have whole light systems that you can control from your phone.
Well, and you can learn that you really don't need as much light as you think sometimes. Like, we have one downward-facing LED bulb in our barn and we just leave it on all the time. It's up in the rafters. And it's like a fifteen-watt LED bulb and that's it. But that's enough to see at night. We'll compare barn lights.
All right, commissioners. Thank you.
You don't have Jake.
Thank you.
So basically, one, two, and three.
Yep, absolutely. Sounds like.
Yeah, see, that's what I was thinking. Okay, we're saying yes on everything here.
Thank you for the clear direction. Appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll be careful when I'm out there walking with my flashlight.
So other items at this time, and then we do have executive sessions for today. One of the items was, was it the Tourism Conference?
Yes.
So this was.
Two items. One is for the request for a commissioner to speak at the Governor's Conference on Tourism in Portland. The conference will be, at some point during the conference, April 3rd to the 5th. They're looking forward to finalizing the program agenda and identifying a county commissioner to serve on the panel.
So tell me about that panel again real quick. Do you know, what all do we know about it?
I didn't bring all of the names. I had them last week. There's a number of people from, I think it's from Colorado and from other places to talk about. It was, I have to pull it back up. Camping feasibility study was one of the reasons that they had invited us to participate on it. It was the market and.
So what's possible, what we think we might be able to do or something.
That's what it was. That's what the intent was for our participation on that panel.
Yeah, I mean, it seemed like it was, if I remember correctly, it was a panel about essentially camp, demand for camping. And, you know, we would be able to provide one strategy for meeting that demand.
Tiny, they all have tiny watts power systems and they can run their microwave and air conditioners with a couple of solar panels.
Definitely. So Commissioner Chang, if you want to go do that, that sounds good to me. If we're not drawing straws today, we're flipping coins.
I was going to flip a coin if needed.
Happy to flip a coin.
So you're offering though, I hear.
Yeah, I just said, you go ahead if you want to.
Okay, yeah, and I'm going somewhere else that day, so there you go. Okay.
That was one item. A second item is, we had intended just to have a very, very brief, a few comments from Robert Tinsel, our CFO, about the consent item on your.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't have time. Good, thank you.
We just didn't quite get to it before we departed. So if it's, if it's okay, Robert.
Sure, yeah. So I'll introduce it from my point of view because, so we were looking at the agenda and there's a proposed consent agenda item talking about another. and there's a proposed consent agenda item talking about another bank account for petty cash in the sheriff's office, correct? Is that?
Yes. Commissioners, thank you. Robert Tinsel, Chief Financial Officer, again, for the record. So, yeah, we want to open up a new checking account for the sheriff's office. And actually, that wasn't in the memo, in case you did see an email, though. This is the result of an audit that was completed by our county internal audit office. And they are currently already using funds, but it's tracked within a safe system on cash on hand. We would like to move that to a banking account where all transactions are tracked electronically instead of manually, and it actually produces a lot more internal controls as consistent with the internal audit recommendation. So, this is just following through on that piece of it. The challenges, I think, in prior years had been if we weren't aware of a checking account. And this is not that situation at all. Actually, I do support less checking accounts and there's a couple of our checking.
Except for this case, yeah.
Like to, but this one has a really good reason and good, great internal controls to capture those transactions for every transaction in and out. And then, there's signature required and there's a trail on every dollar. So, that's why this one's a better choice.
Great.
So, yeah, I'm definitely hearing you that this has a lot of trackability involved and accountability involved, at least internally. I guess one question I have is, you know, there are, you know, any line item or pot of money within the county, there are people who are interested in, you know, making public records requests, digging into information. In terms of, so in terms of external, potential external transparency, is this, is this scenario, you know, better or worse, the same in terms of allowing for transparency to the public?
I would say this is more accountable, there's more accountability with this system. Additionally, the code team has already been doing this since 2018. So, it's just bringing this account in line with the current practice already that the code enforcement team's already doing as well.
Great. Thank you for that.
Thank you. There we go. So, that'd be a consent agenda item. That's why I was just. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Commissioner?
No.
Commissioner Dare?
Um, no. It was good, though, that being on the EOCA call, the fact that we did get a letter today from Tom Kuhn. We were blind copied on that with the, some of the changes done by OHA and perhaps it's not really good for the entire, for a lot of counties.
That's their policy option package in how funding might flow in the next biennium to community service providers and not, some of it to community service providers and not through the health department or something. I didn't know the detail on it.
Right. I just had this, Brenda just done the letter for me, so I hadn't really, like, highlighted it. But I could tell that, yeah, there's a lot going on there and it just really doesn't sound good for, you know, we do have 36 counties and it sounded like it was maybe better for the top, the biggest, the biggest ones and really not good for the little ones.
And I was able to share about COR III on it and that's why I did it. Right at 3:02, I was trying to get it to done before that, but I was able to share. And just inviting basically all the counties from eastern Oregon to understand that we could have a public safety training and response or readiness center looking for training opportunities that could be offset for needs for their agencies. So, it's just a really, just a big, broad outreach for that invitation I did at 3 o'clock.
Great.
Tomorrow morning, there's a dial-in with Senator Finley. Are you available for that, Commissioner Dare? You want to do that or I can do it?
Um, it's at 7:00 AM. I'm okay tomorrow.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And then, as I say, if you ever want to do that, this is the other meeting. And that's a legislative update with our, the senator and some other legislators. Okay, anything else? So, as I say, executive session. So.
A couple of items for.
Real property and litigation.
We do have real property.
Let's start with real property. Okay, yep. So, we're going to stand by, but we are going to go to executive session or those two items mentioned.